I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna have a moment of silence and then Jason will lead us in the pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the Declaration of Conflict per TCA 49-2-202. Board of Education members who have relatives, per the statute relatives means spouse, parent, parent-in-law, child, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, grandparent, grandchild, brother, sister, uncle, aunt, nephew, niece, or any person who resides in the same household as you, employed by the system, or has to raise your hands to identify yourself. Do you certify that the votes that you make tonight will be in the best interest of the school system, regardless of the effect that your vote may have upon the employment of your relative or relatives?
I do.
I do.
521-2, do I have a motion to approve the May 21st, 2019 special call meeting agenda?
Second.
Have a motion second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed say no. Ayes have it. 521-3, discussion of TSBA endorsed Matthew's recommendations in regard to interview questions. Doris, do you want to speak on that?
Well, I know you all have voted already, but I thought it, based on what TSBA said and some things from the Fair Label Act, that you might want to think about, at least having some, the same questions asked of every candidate. It doesn't mean you can't follow up, you know, based on the experience or based on the answers to their questions. Because they're all gonna have different experiences, so there may be follow-up questions, but... And I know Mr. Bennett recommended having them ahead of time or giving them the questions ahead of time. I don't know how you feel about that. The only thing I thought of is we had someone at 3:30 and someone at 7:30. There might be some time in there when they might be able to see what the questions are. Because they're not all gonna be here at the same time. They're staggered. So if you're coming at 3:30, you can be home watching or home... Seeing how the...
If I'm the 3:30 person being interviewed, I'm not gonna tell 7:30 what my questions were.
No, but is 7:30 gonna be watching?
Oh, you mean, they're not gonna be here, you mean one of their spots?
Well, I mean, this is gonna be live, isn't it, online?
Yeah, and you've got them staggered. So you've got one coming at 3:30, but you've got one coming at 7:30.
And probably one's coming...
Well, that's why I think it's even better not to ask the same questions. It wouldn't matter what they told them. Because, you know, I'm not gonna ask Joe Blow the same thing I'm asking Susie Kueh. So if Joe Blow wants to go tell Susie Kueh what I ask him, it's not gonna help Susie Kueh at all because I'm gonna ask her a different set of questions.
Well, Randall Bennett suggests at least five questions. He said, "You need five basic questions to go by," he said. And he said, "Throw it out there, let the whole public know." He said, "That don't mean you can't ask other questions." He said, "You're welcome to ask other questions, but you need five basic ones also."
And what is the purpose?
That goes to everyone. The purpose is, he said, to have some type of standard to go by too, based off those five questions also, to see how well they answer those five questions. He said, "That's the purpose of that, see how well they answer."
And you also have to make it fair. At least make it fair that they're...
So what you're saying, it equalizes the playing field. And if they know the questions ahead of time, they're gonna all prepare to the best of their ability. But if we wanna ask somebody about their grant writing experience or we wanna ask them something on their resume, we can. Well, I can, I mean...
And on those standard questions, you're gonna be looking at how they're... they deliver.
I think that's what he was kinda, how they deliver, how they come across with their answers on the five basic ones. But he says you can ask...
Well, as long as, I mean, I don't have a problem... I mean, they're gonna probably know some basic questions we would ask anyway. But I'm not for not being able to ask specifically to that candidate. I think we need some leeway on that.
And he said, "That was fine."
He said, "Some of their answers may lead to other questions."
Right, well, that's what I'm thinking.
And that's what we're gonna have to do at that point in time.
And have we given everybody an hour now? We gone to an hour? So we could have some good dialogue once we get through our five basic questions.
Yeah. He said, "You can interact with them."
Are the questions that are on here, is that the ones that you think we oughta ask, Doris?
Uh, these were Jason's.
Oh, that was Jason's, wasn't it?
Yeah, those were Jason's.
There were some good ones, some of them were some of what I had.
Well, I've got some questions too that I...
Dr. We're supposed to email you. My email fine, getting messed up there, so... It's probably not going to work, that's my question.
And that was just four that I had thought of, but, you know, I may not get to answer, ask those four. Somebody else, you know, due to time or whatnot, but...
Sandra, do you wanna make a copy of these? My questions for everybody.
Some, there's a couple of...
I just put a bunch up and down, I had to...
See, everybody got a copy of mine, didn't they?
We probably...
The toughest thing, I think, for me is these questions is, well, you know, there's mine, but what if somebody else is similar? I mean, that's kinda what I think, you know?
That's why if you do five tonight, that you know...
Without discussing all our questions now, since this is, you know, we're trying to keep it on the down low or something like... We need to look them over and the ones that are similar, you know...
I mean, maybe part of the basic five.
Yeah, yeah.
So Joe, you're saying five questions, not five...
He said three, three to five.
Not five per person?
No. He said have three to five basic ones and then you can ask as many as you want. And he said, "Then some of those basic questions is gonna lead to another question."
Alright, I'm aware of that, yes.
And, uh, but he just suggested to have some that were the same questions asked to all. I talked to him on the phone then, I had him send me an email.
Did everybody get a copy of that email? Sandra's got it right here from what he recommended.
Well, I just know when I've interviewed, I've been interviewed, and I'd say most everybody sitting on this table has been interviewed. I know it wasn't for any job like this. I've never even been close to interviewing for a job like this. This is a huge job. But I know that I went in cold. I had no idea what they were gonna ask me. I was a nervous wreck because I knew my performance depended on whether or not I was gonna get hired. That's the way I thought everybody was interviewed. I just assumed that nobody was given questions in advance. I mean, how well they can prepare a question to answer, you know, like a robot to us, is not impressive to me. I mean, there may be advantages to that, I just don't see it. I would rather spend our time learning about their experiences and the things about them that make them stand out, but...
Well, you can ask them all that, I mean...
Well, I think we can have three basic questions.
Three, I think, is okay.
I think three's fine, like, what's your vision for Monroe County Schools? What qualifies you to be our... You know, what gives you the qualifications that would be the best pick for our school system? And then what, you know, I don't know. Have you ever been involved in a lot, have you ever been in jail? I guess we can ask that.
No, I don't think we're supposed to ask that, I think...
Well, you can ask if you've been convicted of a crime. But none of them arrested, you can't ask if they're arrested. I'm sure none of these have been...
I was joking. It was a bad joke.
Well, he does recommend that the questions should be shared with the candidates prior to the interviews.
Right, so if we pick out three questions tonight...
Yeah, three to five, he said. Because he said, "You can, you know, you can ask us whatever you want."
And then whatever their answers are, then we may have questions...
From those, and then you might have other questions.
And then when we have the resumes, we can get some, looking at the resume, there might be some questions you wanna specifically ask about.
Back to Faze's point, it's a little bit difficult for us. Anybody that's ever sat through an interview, the person that interviewed you didn't have to come up with their questions in a public forum.
No, right, exactly.
It's a little bit difficult for us, so... And trying to keep those questions private.
And I think at the last director search, we had like ten, fifteen questions and we went around the room and each board member asked that, one of those questions and then, but we followed up with how they answered us, if we had any more questions. And it was public and they knew what they were gonna be asked.
I think we did that, didn't we, Dewitt?
That sounds about right. I don't understand why we don't do it again.
So maybe we came up with nine questions that they know about and then each one ask it and then come off questions off of that, plus more questions that you might have wrote down? Or have five questions and you ask all five, since you're the chairman?
Y'all can participate in that.
I mean, but we would follow up with questions and stuff if we had any.
We could do that.
Or something. Or three or four questions, whatever we come up with.
And just looking at Jason's and Sharon's, their first question is, "What's your vision for Monroe County Schools and how do you plan on achieving that?" And the same thing on Jamie, looking at our county, the future, what's your vision? So that seems to be one that...
I like that third one that Jason has too. I think that's a good one.
Yeah, what do you see is our most important, you know, the most critical issue facing us?
I think that's a good one to ask.
The only concern I have about that one is...
I mean, we have several different things I can think of.
Well, that's true, too. But I'm thinking about Deanna who is in Memphis and probably does not know a lot specifically about what our problems have been here. And I think she's at a little bit of a disadvantage answering that question. So I don't like that. I want them to be equally fair to everyone, including the ones that are so far away from here, they cannot come to a meeting, they do not get to watch it on internet or whatever, or have a question on there. I just think we need to be as fair as we can to all five candidates, not just the ones who are here.
Well, it might not be one of those you fit on out there, but it might be one that's asked.
Yeah, it's a good question.
I think it's a very good question.
I would, I would assume though, that they had done some research and they spoke to somebody here to get some information.
If you've looked at the state report card for the last five years, you'd think the state report card would be the first thing to look at.
There's also several questions on how would you raise teachers now?
Yeah, I put that on there.
I think that's an important question for our candidates.
I do too.
I thought that, do you understand how the BEP formula works? Not too many people do.
And in a three-minute exposit, tell us how it works.
Yeah, right.
We wouldn't know if they were telling the truth or not, though.
So do we want to agree that one question that we should ask is, "What would be your vision for Monroe County School System?"
I think that's a good, that's fine.
So is that a fair?
Would it be the same vision for every, any other high school or system? Basically, based on what the state says? I mean, you know, is he gonna do anything different? Or they, he or she gonna do anything different from the vision that...
I think, I think you, and with that question, you wanna get their thoughts on how they feel that the progress that we need to make. And, you know, we've got a building program, but we're gonna have to continue keeping a building program because we know Sequoia's next after we get this out, if we ever...
If we ever get this out?
Yeah.
Dewitt's question three, you know, if you're familiar with the funding counter, the state expectations for...
That's a good one.
Yeah, that is a good one. Look, there's two questions here. I said, "What would be your first priority as leader of Monroe County Schools?" And Dewitt says, "What would be the first things you do once you report duty?" That's kinda similar.
I liked his number four question, too.
I just put the feeling in there like, this is what's going on, how you gonna correct this.
That's right.
This is my deal.
And that sorta goes along with the, with the morale question.
Because, yeah, because that's a big problem we have in what we can only interview teachers from what they said, so it's a big problem, I think.
Marcia has, you know, achievement scores across the board, if they're low. What strategy would you implement?
You know, the straight rule, we can implement, no?
And Jamie's like the BEP and funding budgets.
So what is everyone in agreement on, maybe for the second question?
Okay, the first one was what?
What is your vision? One that Jason put, what is your vision for the Monroe County School System and how do you plan on achieving that vision? How, is that sound okay?
That's fine.
Okay, that'd be number one. What's number two?
I think Dewitt's number four is a good one.
Yeah, and that could, you could even say on that one, how would you promote positive morale and...
Add it to it.
And the climate, the climate of our schools. Make it more positive or whatever.
Are we talking about Dewitt's number four?
I like Dewitt's number four.
I do too.
And that one could lead to other questions, too. One of my concerns is how, how to evaluate current administrators and things like that, and what's the timeframe on that?
And I think John's got those over there, questions for interviews and stuff, teachers, principals, and so...
Marcia's number three, not too good, too.
Marcia's number three.
So it seems to be one of our lowest marks is achievement, not in every school, but overall.
So for the number two question, do we want to go with Dewitt's number four question?
I think so.
And then for the number three question, we wanna go with Marcia's number three? Does everyone agreeable with that?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. So, now number four question.
How many will you ask then?
I think, don't you think maximum of five?
Let's have five.
Or maybe from maximum of four even. Because these four questions could really lead you into different discussions, I don't know.
But would you not, my number three question, of course, that's, I don't know, it's not... What plan or plans would you develop to keep students who have attendance problems from going to homeschool?
That's a good question.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, that's something I think we need to work on.
Well, put that as our number four question.
Do we have a big problem with that?
Yes, there is, yeah, overall. If they don't wanna come to school, they go homeschool.
Yeah, yeah. Have attendance problems and there's a demand, you say, well, homeschool them and that's...
Maybe the last question needs to be about the budget.
I think we need a budget question.
Yeah.
Alright, what?
Dewitt's got a budget question. Number six.
Who?
Dewitt's got a number six, and you've got the BEP formula.
Could you combine those two somehow?
I would think so.
You could.
That's kinda what we're into right now, I think.
Dewitt's number six combined with that.
They can't legally do that.
But, I mean, we could do it, so to speak. The 81 act?
We'll tie it into that.
I think you all asked all of our questions and then whatever leads off.
And then we can ask as, as we want to. And if I answer all those without question, then we've got a lot of other questions we can ask.
And would you do it just, she asks the first question and then you all ask?
Right. And if it leads to another, if we don't have any questions, we move to the second question.
Is that agreeable with everybody?
Well, I missed out on that.
Doris, tell her.
Oh, what I said was, if she reads the question, if she asks the question after question one, then it opens up the door for you all to ask follow-up, depending on their answer. If you don't have follow-up, you go...
From that particular question, I see.
Or their answer. You're gonna listen to their answer and have questions.
And if we get through all five questions, then we could be open to ask some of our other specific questions. Because all these questions are okay, aren't they?
And you're gonna have their resumes, so...
And we have their resume.
You'll know about grant writing and those type things that you can, you know, if you, if you get to the point where she asks the question about budget or something, that opens the door for grant writing, I think, and more everything.
Joe, we need to make it in a motion?
Yes. Do we need to read each question?
Yeah. What's gonna be the question about the budget?
I think we got Dewitt's number six, and I'm with Jamie's number five.
I'm gonna let Sandra read it. Of course, she's kinda wrote it down over here.
Okay.
Just give her just a minute.
Question number one is going to be Jason's question number one. What is your vision for Monroe County Schools and how do you plan on achieving that vision? That's the first question. The second question will be Dewitt's number four. This year has been somewhat stressful for some employees as we have worked through the transition to a new hire. How would you promote positive morale and help employees feel secure and confident moving forward into the new school year?
Good job.
Number three will be Marcia's number three. And it is, if one of our schools has a significantly low achievement score across the board, what sort of strategy would you implement to improve achievement among the students? Question... Question number four will be Jamie's number four.
No, my number three.
Number three.
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 One, two, three.
Uh, number four will be Jamie's number three.
Number three, yes. What plan or plans would you develop to keep students who have attendance problems from going home, going to homeschooling?
Question number... Question number three.
And then question number five will be a combination of Jamie's number five and Dewitt's number six. Jamie's number five is, do you understand the BEP formula and how it works?
Question number five.
And Dewitt's number six is, are fund balances at a minimum required a male and the next few years may, make balancing our budget extremely challenging? How will you approach this process for develop, for developing a workable budget?
And you can put those together.
Yes.
I think that's all we need as far as standard. Will you email those to everybody?
Do I have a motion to approve these questions that Sandra has read?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Have a motion second, is there any more discussion?
And these will get emailed to all the candidates, correct?
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it.
Do we need to make it in form of a motion that we can ask other questions as they arise? Do we need to put that in a motion? Not really, do you think, Doris?
Or at the end. Maybe they don't arise, but at the end, if they haven't been asked, we think.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to.
Is that in form of a motion?
Is that follow, talking about follow-up questions?
Yeah. Follow-up questions and extra questions.
Dialogue.
Oh, before you said, making a motion that we ask follow-up questions?
No, just if it's okay that we do that. I mean, I don't want, I want them to know that there will be other questions, maybe, that will come up specific to that candidate.
We can, I mean, I don't think we really have to because it's a part of the interview process.
Okay, well, then let's don't, let's don't make it complicated.
Yeah.
We'll just ask what we want to, except all those things Doris said we couldn't ask.
If y'all ask, I mean, there's gonna be anxiety.
Are you on opioids? Our pharmacists say it and it gets a lot of him to divulge, but you're questionable.
521- forward, discussion of the TSB recommending lift a contract for the director of schools.
I thought we settled it.
Well, yeah, but you know, we have talked, I mean, I have thought about that and after meeting, John and I talked just a minute about it. You know, if you... I don't know if two years is long enough to see if somebody's really doing a good job. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I've just thought about if they, if they get through the... First year's kinda learning, I mean, you're kinda, your feet wet. Second year, you might be making improvements, but, uh, I don't know. I don't, I've just kinda thought that...
I think they oughta be able to tell in two years.
I think after two years, then you can extend it.
I think I was the only one that did, and the reason I did, your first year, like she says, is learning. Second year should be better. If you give them then a three or four-year contract, what happens if things are not better? But a three-year contract will give you a learning year, a better year. If the third year's better, then give him a third or three or four-year contract. If the third year is not better, then you've got an uh-oh situation. Do we give him one more year or what? You're not tied. If you give him a four-year contract and no trend has been established for at least two years, then you can have a four-year uh-oh situation.
I don't think we oughta do four.
No.
You could have a three-year uh-oh situation.
But if you see improvements in two, then if you've got any sense as a board, you would extend it.
Right, absolutely.
That's a trend, yes. One year's not a trend, but at least two is.
Two is a trend, so, I mean, I'm gonna take the two.
I'm still saying we go with two.
You still think we go with two?
Well, I tell you, an alternative to that is John Fogerty told me when I talked to him during Christmas, that he was hired on a three-year contract and at the end of that three years, if it was renewed, from there on out, he had two.
Two years.
So he started off with three years to get established and then after that, he had two years, two years, two years, two years. I like that because I think that gets him through the initiation process and gives him a little, an extra year there in the beginning. But after he's got his seed planted, he should be pretty good to go for two years. I don't see any...
I thought we meant with Doris about this. That's why we decided for two years.
We need to start with two years and extend it.
Extend it, that's right.
So you think two years, I mean, I've found...
You can extend it because you'll have to pay him that extra hundred thousand dollars in if you, if you got three years.
Well, if you saw in two years if the things were going really south.
Then you could send him a three to four-year contract.
If things are going good, you extend it.
If he was doing really good.
Well, if it was going south.
If it was going south, you would give him...
We send him south. We sent him south.
Or him.
I know, so he goes... We go through this process, if you know.
Well, what if you did a two-year, and if he's done good, it's an automatic one-year extension, then after that, three years is up, then you can start the two-year, two-year, two-year.
We just do two years right now, like we said.
You know, I don't like doing yearly extensions, but if you put, if he's done good after two years, he automatically gets that one-year extension, which would give him three, and then after that, do the two-year, two-year, two-year.
So then we'd have to decide, what do we call doing good after two years? What's that gonna be based on?
I think you'd have to look at the way we evaluate, like the school scores and...
We go by the evaluations, like we do every year.
Yeah, look at the evaluations very seriously, but...
Well, not just his evaluations, but school's accountability and all the things that are involved with those.
But I'd like for us to get on an evaluation system that's continuously, that's same thing every year. We've never been the same every year.
We need to do that.
We need to adopt one and stay there.
Yeah, I agree.
So that we know what they're growing on to, and not every year. It's changing it up.
Well, I did, I did feel that we needed to expand our evaluation, when we did that last year. And, and I, I like that evaluation, but...
Well, the one we had last year, I think if we did something very similar to that, we would be pretty much, 'cause we included state scores and that kind of thing. I don't know, it doesn't matter anymore.
What we wanted to do it to you. Our evaluation was, we handed it to the director a month before we evaluated it. You know, and that's, that's not fair either.
Well, you need to have it...
That's not fair either.
About, he needs to know when he's gonna be evaluated, right? When he first gets the contract.
Yes, not the month before he's evaluated.
Well, I mean, what changed from the year before? I didn't think that much changed.
There wasn't that much change, but we included the...
We had another category.
The overall grade, state report card, if it's a one, two, three, four, if it was a... It was like a twenty percent of his score was...
And then we were held accountable.
And something like...
Well, I think that's important, because...
I just like to be consistent.
Yeah, that's fine, but I think what, what happens in our school system as far as report cards is very important.
Well, back to the contract, are we gonna stay on two, or we wanna put two with the one-year extension, then go two, two, two?
I think we do two, and then we determine that second year. Kinda like, just give us some, I don't think we oughta say one way or the other right now, just have a two-year contract. I don't know.
If it goes good, we can extend it to, if it does that good.
We gonna leave that as is? It's already been voted on for many years.
But we didn't, what about the, oh, well, we can extend anything, it don't matter, we don't...
Five twenty-one dash five, Sharon wants to discuss our process again about narrowing down the candidates from five to three.
I know we've already voted on it, but to me, it seems a little unfair. It's like taking two of our votes away. I just don't think, I don't think we need to rush this process, we need to get the best director that we can get. And when we do that, it's gonna be like, whoever is number one on that list is gonna automatically assume they're gonna be the director, and that may not be the case. I figure if we could give our top three, we can write it down, say it, whatever, but I just think...
I've changed my mind on it, too. I think we oughta go with the top three.
We do, because I think, like you say, you know, one person could get four votes, and then the others get one, 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 one. I mean, you know, that's not very definitive, I don't think.
Well, I like it better when we have three. My main thing the other day was just not knowing what Janie was saying and what Jason was saying. I wanted that to be written down, and I was just going with what, being Torres said. But I, after I got home, I got to thinking about it, and I think, I think we oughta have three votes, too.
Well, we did the architects gave our top three, and this is more important than architects, in my book, and we at least oughta give our top three.
So I, I've changed my mind, and my mother always said, you know, if you don't change your mind, the woman doesn't know her mind, you know?
When we list our top three, I think we need to do it alphabetically, rather than our first, second, and third. That way, it's gonna be more fair to the candidates.
I agree.
So we list them alphabetically, and then...
'Cause we really might not know which one we'd like, you know, you know, it might be... I think that's a good idea.
So we'd list our top three in no specific order.
Right.
So nobody knows which is our first and which is our third.
Okay, I'm going to...
So we just put down three?
Yeah, three in alphabetical order.
Didn't I make that motion, didn't I make that motion to do the one? I think I did.
Yeah, you did.
So I wanna amend that motion.
It don't matter, I can amend it, anybody can amend the motion.
Okay, well, some, I can amend it, I'll amend my own motion. I wanna amend my motion to where we put down our top three in alphabetical order, and we do it on paper, and we hand them to Sandra, and she reads them. And Mark, have a tally or something.
And this, this is after we hear all the interviews.
Yes.
This is after the interviews, we're not doing that till our next board meeting.
I know, I know, we're gonna...
I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If you can continue to discuss, if you need to. Motion in second, no more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Do you hear a motion, we adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Oh, wow, record.
I thought we were gonna, we're not talking budget tonight.
See, I, for some reason, I thought budget was...
I thought it too.
Well, you get all them phone calls from everybody, they don't know what they're doing.
It was these questions, you see, the interview was gonna be...
Do we have a meeting tomorrow?
People call you, and they'll say, "Well, someone..."
We don't have anything till next Wednesday at three-thirties, is that right?